Well, we are at three twenty-four. And we will wait for such decisions because we have already done that. And let's see if I, since we don't have internet, do we?
Do you have, oh, do you not have packets?
Oh, I have one, no, because we had, um, internet, uh, we were.
Yeah, I'll show us, can we?
I can give, I have one extra.
We can all look at this pile of, we're all sitting next to each other.
Uh, Karen's got one, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
John, you can show them.
This is the, it's turned back there, please go grab that.
Here, take, we'll share, I'll, I'll go.
Share. There's a roll call.
Peter Levitt.
Karen Curry-Tonak. Karen, Karen.
John McCarler.
Cam Styles. And I need Chrissy Heigl's pending. Make it back.
Oh.
I'll add her when she comes back.
Okay, good.
Uh, agenda review. Any comments? Can you leave it? Motion?
Will she to accept the agenda as presented?
Second. On paper?
Aye.
Aye. In the long-winded minutes of June tenth, can we do it this time? Uh, yeah.
Yes.
We might be right here.
Agenda.
So. And we're, I remember what happened to Karen, but I know we, it's up, the, prove the minutes of June tenth.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then.
Yeah, I do those.
I'm not.
To come in.
Uh, so what I could do also from the night events?
Mr. Children.
Yeah. Um. Opening public input and seeing your public includes public input. Informational items. Starting out. The balance and ready season. Financials.
Financials.
Mm-hmm. Just for my financial report, just I want you to be aware that I do have the final, um, working trial balance from Plautic and Sanderson. Um, and that the, um, unassigned fund balance has been adjusted upward. Uh, the exact amount will be nine hundred fifty-three thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars that will be returned to the town.
Can we discuss the difference between what we had assumed and some of that?
There were some, right, there were some, um, adjustments from prior year encumbrances, um, that were.
What was the number we talked about last time?
Um, eight hundred forty-one thousand.
Yep.
So there were some prior year encumbrances that were, um, released and moved over. Um, and, um, the general adjustments were made and I reviewed those. And I've also spoken to Cheryl Pratt and, um, Ashley Miller about the numbers.
Um. Him, we were discussing a number that was like three hundred and eighty-two thousand?
That, that's the return from the school. So then we have the revenue, anticipated revenue on top of that. And then we have the, um, funds from last year as well. So everything has been captured, that has been saved and to be returned to the town.
Do you have a, a breakdown for the?
Actually, I did not run the breakdown with me.
Okay.
Um, but I can email it back.
Well, okay, so nine, just to recap, or do we have this on paper anywhere? So.
You, you didn't print the breakdown? No, I didn't, um.
Okay. So nine fifty-three is the, is the number we being returned to the town or we have anticipated revenues on top of that?
No, no, that's the total.
That's the total.
Returned to the town.
Yes.
And, uh, those monies include, um, med, some Medicaid reimbursement in the form of about two hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, special ed aid, so cat aid for thirty-one thousand. We've got the keynote garden, our kindergarten funding for forty thousand. Uh, we have Prospect Mountain, hundred and thirty-three thousand. And then we have, uh, three hundred and forty-five thousand from Alton Central. And I'm not, I didn't keep a tally there, but, um, those are, are generally what those monies come from. Where that nine fifty-three comes from.
Just for what was the Medicaid number, I think I wrote down?
Two twenty?
Two twenty?
Oh, what we gave back, these, at the central school was three forty-five oh forty-nine.
What was the Medicaid number?
Oh, Medicaid, I'm sorry. Medicaid is, uh, two twenty-eight?
Okay, that's right.
Eight ninety-seven.
Okay, but, um, just to discuss.
Yep.
With the rest of the board, my understanding is we had some issues with prior year.
Correct.
Information.
Yep.
That needed to be fixed, can we describe that?
Uh. Probably not well, Laurie can. And I need to have her explain what happened on MS twenty-five. I, I'll, I'll jump in and start. Upon receiving a calculation for, uh, monies to return, uh, what I had for numbers and what Laurie presented to me, uh, were not the same. Knowing that there are things that BAs need to do with calculations, I figured, well, maybe I'm just not doing something. Couldn't get those numbers to mesh. Uh, I asked her to take out the MS twenty-five from last year so that, um, I could get some kind of launch to know look at the numbers. Upon doing that, uh, it was discovered that, um, uh, there had been not enough return given to the town. In the order of, I don't. It was on the, the revenue report, the MS twenty-four. Um, I reported what our unassigned fund balance was at fiscal year end two thousand eighteen. Um, did not move it into the unassigned cell on the form. Um, and as a result, it sat in the retained section. Um, I did contact DRA about it, um, it was not caught at the DRA level. Uh, because typically if monies are retained, there is a form that is signed off on and there's a, a vote that's taken by the board. So, uh, it was not caught by DRA. Um, I did speak with our auditors and said, you know, would this have eventually been caught? Um, and they did say yes, through this, this year's process, because they look at all of the forms, um, in the DRA portal. Um, they go right into the Department of Revenue. So all of the adjustments and everything, you know, everything is uncorrected and that's, this is where we end up.
So what, what was that number of, um, that was not returned?
The previous year. I believe it was three hundred and forty-five thousand.
Yep.
So given that there's still time to correct this form, we are doing our due diligence and making sure that it's done. Uh, so you have a new MS twenty-five that we're gonna have to ask you to sign. Apologies, but we're gonna have to ask you to do that. And, um, the town has had until October thirty-first to get theirs and so we're, we're not holding the tax rate up. But it is going to be done right. So, um, the numbers have been looked at, they're correct now and, um, at least it's fixed going forward.
So just for the broad strokes of math, I'm trying to understand where we were looking at returning eight twenty-one and then we realized there's three hundred and forty-five thousand more. How do we get to nine fifty-three?
Right, um, so there were, um, like I said, the, um, encumbrances, um, about two hundred and eighty-six thousand in encumbrances that had to be reversed and re-expensed. Um, and those were actually audit adjustments.
I don't follow.
Right.
So two hundred and eighty-six thousand in encumbrance had to be reversed?
Yes.
And then they were.
So we couldn't just maybe get a memo with everything?
Yeah, maybe. Yes.
You know, from the auditors and.
Yeah.
I think, uh, I think that'd be good.
Yes. Let's talk that way.
Yeah, that's good.
I'll never remember it really without, without.
Right, I agree, I thought we were gonna have that to go over this meeting.
I just.
Um. But just, does, so does that, that, when that got reversed and re-expensed, did that end up landing in this year?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
Okay. Does that put us at any risk of being out of budget?
None, because it's not like we're trying to go back four years. This is caught with enough time for us to make adjustments. Um, I've been in contact with DRA, we've talked to them about deadlines, there's a line on the form for amendments, it, it happens. So we are within the timeframe, which is very good for us. Um, we just don't want it to go forward, it has to be corrected now.
That's why we have auditors, right?
That's correct. Yes, but the audit isn't finished, so we would have pushed this to another year. We're not gonna do that. So at least it's caught, it's corrected and right, and then when the auditors finish in the next four weeks, it will be correct, but we are not gonna let this go forward and skew the tax rate.
Right.
Again. Um, so it's fixed.
Yes, okay. Okay.
I'm gonna provide you with a written explanation.
Um, anything on the financials, is there anything to point out, Laurie?
I, I'm sorry.
Was the budget to? I saw it.
Um. I mean, there are, um, some negative variances, but, but we knew that going forward in the purchases that we were making, that there are other provisions in place, um, to cover those variances. And we'll see, for example, some negative variances, um, in the salaries for health, um, and speech, and we still need to do that, um, budget adjustment, uh, moving that money formally at a, at a board meeting to move those monies from that line into those other, uh, non-CBA lines.
Any other discussion on financials?
Yeah.
All right. You're not trying to do sports, um, there's one thing that's. About. I'll get assembly notes.
Tell you the assembly notes, yeah, um, which I plan on going to, um, I've been able to ask to you. And I'm just welcome to go too, if you'd like.
I'll be there anyway.
I'll see you there.
Yeah. It's a pretty, it's a pretty dry day, so. But, uh, so, yeah. So what we, what we're looking at?
Great. Um, those around committee minutes.
All right, well, adding on to that, if there's anyone who has a resolution or something that they have to look at, we can submit a resolution.
Like grabbing? Number two. Can I comment?
As noted, I haven't seen this, um, affair. We talked about obviously the water issue with the field. Um, I did go ahead and get close to see if we were to ask for what it would really cost. Um, and it was anywhere in the neighborhood, if we were just to do a soccer field by, most areas are nothing, just soccer field would be about a million. If we were gonna do soccer, baseball, softball, or take the whole thing down, about four million, so that's why we're, yes.
We keep trying.
We have.
We could buy some nice fields for it.
We have exhausted pretty much.
I have, ever.
Every avenue we find.
When happened, like, what's the final thing, we were trying to get the, the water over?
Yeah.
From property owners?
They said no.
No.
They said.
Both of them, so no. And we thought there was a right of way between them, there's not. It's privately owned, they've already said no. Actually, those two said no, but then there were the other two we approached as well, and so four have said no, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, we've tried everything. We've talked, John's talked to the fire department.
Yeah.
About the possibility of a line, we've talked about going down Pine Street, but then we don't have a line big enough. We, we've tried everything, so now we're thinking, can we just do a piece of the field? The soccer field, make that beautiful, and I think we could have enough water with a two-inch pipe, but we just have to look at a two-inch pipe now.
So, one of the last budget committee meetings, conversations, is there supposed to be redoing the line?
I know.
Right in front of the school?
Yeah.
Is there?
Good, we, we had the water department come to our meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they said the same thing, they just have no idea when they're gonna do it.
Right.
Um, they were like, well, it, yeah, we're talking about it, but there was nothing.
Well, the, the conversation right now is the timeline for it and when they're doing it in the next year or two and the cost impact under the town, but I didn't know if there's enough water, like, the conversation about can we tie into that and get that out when they redo that project?
It's if you wanna wait a year or two.
Can we contribute to the cost of that?
Yeah.
I, I, I just, it's one of those things, if they're tearing up all the school streets anyway.
Yeah.
Um, and that's the conversation right now, I can get a few more details on that.
Definitely, because we talked to them about that, and that was the, the holding back factor was, they didn't know, they didn't know when. They knew it was gonna be done at some point, but no idea the timeline, and so was there.
I don't think it was even to the point of a year or two, it, no.
Well, that was, I mean, granted, this is the budget committee's translation of meeting with the water department, so it'll be interesting to see when the water department presents to the budget committee that it's.
Right.
I will probably have a better idea after listening to the water department present their budget, because we've already been talking about it, so I know the budget committee is very aware of the school street water project. Um, it just would make, I don't know, my happy little fiscal brain, that if we're doing work right in front of our own building, that we not, make sure we explore the options of what does it kinda mean for us to run?
Yep.
Something up to our own fields if we can.
Right, oh, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree, I just gotta do it.
Speaking of the budget committee. We don't do budget committee report.
Um, we are now entered into our weekly meetings. They knew we were meeting today, they're planning to meet with us, um, they had said end of November.
Twenty-first.
Okay, they're already.
Perfect.
Um, the only big question that's been asked of me that I attempted to figure out is, um, Roger Nelson keeps asking me who the Barnstead chair for the JMA is, uh, JMA Budget Committee, um, I forwarded that question on and they don't have any information.
Isn't there?
Well, I believe he felt Roger covered for Paul, um, and, and kind of took over for, for Paul last year. Um, so he keeps asking me who the Barnstead representative would be. And I don't have the answer, but that seems to be the, the only thing they are asking of the school, that and, um, how many spots the high school has up the vote. They wanna know how many kids get turned away and if we can save costs on busing high school kids up there. There's a lot of high school questions, and then the other question they had asked was if we were gonna be bringing any new or big warrant articles, and I had talked to them, the only one they would see would be one that we had removed, 'cause we had presented the cafeteria correctly and we had withdrawn that, and so.
Yeah.
I said that would be reappearing, but there wasn't anything else.
No.
Um.
Can you s, tell me again what the, uh, it's the JMA Budget Committee Chair?
Yes.
Okay. I'll do a bit during now.
Right, finance.
The, yeah, it's the joint finance budget committee, um, that oversees the prospect budget. Um, and supposedly it should be a Barnstead chairperson, 'cause.
They alternate.
They alternate, and last year was Barnstead's year, but because of what happened with Paul.
Certainly, certainly alternated, yeah.
Well, that's what Roger's assuming, but, um, when I reached out to Sharon and Tim about it, they know nothing about who from the budget committee, they gave me the list of every member of the budget committee, and said for me to contact the town of Barnstead, and.
Let me co, let me contact Brian, uh, the superintendent in Barnstead and see if he knows anything.
You know, part of me is, I thought that the high school would be, uh, Barnstead would reach out to the high school and. So I'm not, that's the part that's.
Well, Eunice would know, just ask Eunice.
Well, and, uh, Roger said for me to not ask Eunice, but I'm gonna like bring it up at our next.
She has to know, I mean, it's not like she's trying to go to know.
Right. Yeah, and it appears Roger will be the town of Alton's representative to that budget committee, so. Uh, you know, and other than we have meetings scheduled every week from here until, um, Christmas, um, that's pretty much, the last meeting was very short, it was just an organizational meeting.
I'm conscious. Don't, doesn't the, uh, JMA have, they have the finance committee?
Mm-hmm.
And you have three and three on each from each side? On that committee, from, three from Barnstead, three from?
I think two. I think it's two budget committee members from each side, but then the school representative is there also?
Because if I, if I remember right, that, in, from my previous expla.
Which I think it's three, at least three.
That. That it was that committee who chose who is gonna be on the joint committees, the joint committee. So they would be.
So you're talking the regular high school finance committee.
Correct, they're the ones that I believe choose the.
No. No.
Who's gonna be the joint.
The, the prospects finance committee doesn't choose who's on the JMA budget committee. The budget committee from each town decides who they're sending to it.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that.
The, the finance committee decides who they're sending to the meeting, which is usually the chair of the finance committee.
That's confusing.
It's a little bit, I'm trying to take it all in, but, um, yeah, no, right now we've just, they're planning on having you guys come, they did talk about how they liked how you presented last year, and they had tried to speak to the other departments to, to mirror. Um, so we did get a compliment as to how organized and, um, they liked the overview.
Yep.
That you presented along with all the details that came with it. So they, they were asking all departments to do an overview like you had with the, and the actual budget, I mean, so I'll give you the kudos that they gave, they.
That's a really good idea.
You know.
Really, really good idea.
Yeah, um, so that's what they're requesting of the other departments, um, but they said they really liked the quick overview where the, you know, the big numbers were changing, what was coming out, what was going on, but then the finite budget underneath it.
Nice, yeah.
Um, so they liked that, they gave kudos to the school for that, and we're meeting from, from here on out.
So we're gonna do the twenty-first.
Yep, they just, we all parked, um, November-ish.
Yeah.
Anything to bring up on the safety and wellness report?
Uh, just, we're going to be a very active, uh, committee this year, and, uh, members have got some great ideas. The biggest one that we'll be doing is we will be doing a wellness fair, um, during our discovery day in March, and bringing in massage therapists and yoga folks and maybe folks from Primex, and the committee is just formulating the idea right now, and we've each got pieces of it, so it's exciting and we're just going full guns to get that done.
Now, we have a tech meeting.
Okay.
I'll send you the minute. Yeah, I'll mention just a couple of things from the tech committee, and, um, it was going to be addressed so that school board members have wifi access during the meetings.
That's, yes.
Um, and also, there's discussion about, you know, whether we can offer wifi guest access. Um, one of the things that came up in that discussion is that we really need to look at some extenders to boost cell signal in school also, because we have areas that, um, have no reception at all, and that's a safety issue. Um, and so that's underway, take a look at that. And, and basically the plan as far as guest wifi access is after the December break, um, because some changes need to be made with the system down for maintenance. Um, something will be put in place, um, to provide guest access, that's all, in a nutshell.
And they have been told to purchase the extenders if they need them.
Right.
So, just.
Fries have gave them to us for free in Concord, uh, enterprise ones, so, but we also contract.
We need to know who to be talking to.
Well, we, I can definitely put you in touch with my rep, but we, we have extensive cell phone contracts and we pay them, so that might be wild, but I can talk to them, see.
Does that make clear having trouble getting somebody to call?
Yeah, other than like a personal, we're looking for more, you know, like, if you have, if you have that contract, I would love it, I'll, I'll, I can toss it.
Yeah, yeah.
And we wanna get one of that too, like, this, the second we can get it and we wanna get it happening, so.
Right, there are recover and strategic.
Done.
Yep.
Yep.
Extra earn report, just for your information. Moving on to action items, senior public.
Yeah. So we recently did, uh, a public bid looking for, uh, qualified contractors for a two-year contract for our snow removal cap, um, VCS and also the SAU office. Um, we sent out bids to probably, uh, probably six or seven companies, and we see three responses. Um, Sean has got, I have gone over, and they've all gone out with the best vibrations. Um, and the low bidder, uh, is R and K landscaping, um, being the base bid, plowing, including ten sandings. Um, it's ninety-eight hundred dollars, and then what Sean will do is, as needed, um, hiring them on an hourly basis, um, as needed. He does not always need to have, uh, if you see over on the right-hand side, it says snow removal of sidewalks and alleyways, he does not necessarily need to have them do that. So we just, just don't go, it's kinda like a, a base bid and, and on the cart, so to speak.
And if we approve the snowplow bid for R and K landscaping?
Right.
Um, any more discussion? I'm just trying to understand the math, um, how we do the construction here. So is it the plowing column, is that extending out based on the hourly, or is the hourly snow removal a separate item to actually remove snow off site?
So doing construction, it's a base bid for doing the entire season of twenty-three thousand eight. Um, and, um, if they need to come in, um, say with a loader or if they're doing additional work, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
Okay, so that's the system.
Right. So what they're doing is they're basically securing the entire season. Um, on a base price of twenty-three thousand eight.
Um, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any questions?
There's just one change on the list, um, Zach Fustlovich, we're not doing boys basketball B team.
Peter, you wanna do these motions?
I don't have one.
Oh, sure. Um, motion to accept Kareem Waldron as classroom educational assistant.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve David Bluear, boys basketball A team.
Second. Looking for this?
Let me see.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Motion to accept Matthew Yuma for girls soccer B team.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Well, I'm standing. Motion to accept Andrew Jackson as boys soccer B team and girls basketball B team.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to accept Greg Mayhew as classroom coach.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion to accept Kristen Thomas as girls' softball coach.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So, may you charging policy?
Just one call, this is a required policy, which we do not have. And as a result of some high balances that we have on students. Can we just pan this half, please?
Hold on, I have a second ball.
So, it's a required policy. At the end of last year, we had quite a sizable balance of unpaid lunches, and we don't have anyone meal charging. This was taken by, from the school association. And then I worked with Sam and with John, so that we could put in layers of addressing parents on unfunded balances. So, that we'll now have a process by which Sam contacts parents for a certain overage. And then if they don't find Sam, John's gonna jump in and have a parent come in. It gives us a little bit more teeth. We are not changing, not giving children food. It's not a child issue, it's an adult issue. We will always feed children. But really, the, the biggest thing is that it gives a layout on how the school is going to respond to unfunded balances.
What was the balance last year?
Oh, we had nine thousand dollars or so. Oh, and a little time school.
Yeah. That's where.
In the rally, it was about fifty-three hundred.
Okay.
It still had to come.
Very similar to ours if you scale it up.
Exactly. It is, we're just, it's a required policy, so we should have it anyway. It addresses a.
I'm assuming that my school, my school bucks that we used, that, I mean, part of the issue that I, I mean, I'm must be because a parent is that I try not to use that, because it's like a two dollar and seventy-five cent charge every time I use it.
Correct.
And I'll honestly find the envelope that I've put the check in. You know, I'll assume that my child will have taken it, and I'm finding it's still in backpacks, I'm still in. You know, and I know somebody like, well, just go into the school, and that's not always a feasible.
The district could decide to pick up that fee, and you might wanna weigh the cost of, analyze the cost of picking up those fees. Because my school bucks could give you a report of the credit card fees, so it's transparent to the parents versus the balance that you have every year. Like, it might be.
I would use that service way more often, but in all honesty, it's, I'm saving two dollars and seventy-five cents by writing a check, but I don't, it doesn't always get there.
And do you realize if you have a kid at both schools, that you have to pay that fee twice?
Correct.
Yeah, that was a rough year last year, because every payment I get, it would be nice if somehow they combined that, but.
I didn't realize that the district could put, pick up the fees.
You can choose to do that with my school bucks, yes, you can.
Okay, I'm gonna look into that.
I have about thirty entries a month.
I'm not sure if this is helpful in, in such a small school, but in Concord, what we do is we feed the balances back from my school bucks. It's all automated, feeds back into Power, back into School Messenger. We use a lot of the same software. And then there's automated calls that go out of School Messenger, so those reminders go out every single day if there's a balance. It's not a person making the call, it's just a constant reminder, so that's one thing.
It's just a roaming call, the calls every day?
Yeah, or somebody initiates it, but they don't actually have to make the call, they may have to send the call. Also, we have a food service assistant.
Sam does the email alerts, those are easy enough to do, but you're getting.
Yeah, but they email, we're trying to get you as a parent, set it up.
It's in School Messenger, and so you can work on the balance in School Messenger. Or even with the connection between School Messenger and Power School, you can select based on criteria in Power School, and then just with one click, send everything out, so. It might, we have a food service assistant in Concord who does all of that stuff. And I know she, her name is Lisa, I know it, I don't know why, I'm just tired, too. I work with her.
I can look on your website.
Sorry, but just call the district office.
Or when you email the, the contact you have for Verizon, if you toss that last name in.
Yes, yes, I'll remember it by the time I get up in.
Do you know how many parents actually have access and log into that my school bucks account? Like, are they using it? I know that in order to receive a notification when my children have a low balance, I had to go in and set it up personally. It's, it's my account. So, I don't, do we have a significant number of parents that are using it?
That's a good que, that's a good question.
I am.
Well, everybody gets a code, but whether they actually go in and set it up and know, I only know.
And use it to pay, yeah.
Well, and use it to pay and to also set up the notification that there's a low balance. Because if you don't know that you have to do that individually, parents may not have gone in and set up. I have it set up, so I get a notification if it goes below ten dollars on any of my kids.
Yeah, that's what I do, I also do the auto pay, just because it's for my sanity.
I should, but I'm cheap, but I don't have to pay two dollars and seventy-five.
The other thing we do with my school bucks, which could help, which could help bring your parents into it, is they have a whole school store associated with it, too. So, as you're selling things, I know ACS tends to like write a check and send it into the school, but you could sell your T-shirts, and you could sell your whatever fees that you charge the parents there. And so, it could all be integrated, but it might bring in more of your food service customers if, if there's sort of more of a culture using an online store.
Oh, I have a sense, though, and I don't have any hard numbers, that we do have a lot of parents using the NutriKids system, so. But I don't have any.
Good lord, to send them the five-dollar like field trip stuff that way instead of trying to.
Oh, my god, that would be so nice.
I hate checks. I apologize.
It's like a Venmo for schools, kinda.
Well, it's.
It's just the arm and payments. And again, you decide whether to pick up the credit card fee yourself or to, you know.
But if there's a way that we can integrate a lot of the things that we spend money in for through one system.
You may find, they have a new power partnership with Power School, so you can actually put those fees in Power School parent. There's a whole fees module there, and then it all integrates with my school bucks, that's brand new as of last year. And then there's, I'm not using that yet, but those three systems integrate really well when you start looking at the connections between them.
For me, it would just, if there was. If I'm trying to find cash for something or write a check on five dollars, I would really like that.
All right, so we have a policy.
Yes.
Motion to accept policy EFAA first and second meeting.
Second. Any more discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, we don't have any public, so we will move on to future agenda items.
We'll bring the final budget numbers to you, so you can go around those before we just move on to budget plan. Now, with transportation, we're doing the whole list now. Anyone else want to review the breakdown on the MS twenty?
Oh, yes, we'll be doing that.
Oh, and Peter has pointed out that we now can go to September ninth minutes, now that Christie's here.
Oh, yes.
Christie?
I'll make a motion, I move that we approve the September ninth minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Um, aye.
Love's game.
We're gonna take through our weird forms a lot.
Oh, wait, wait, I'm hungry, we have three, but hopefully.
Next meeting date is November fourth.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, November fourth. So, does anyone want to adjourn again?
We need non-public.
If we do, we need a non-public, okay.
Under, I'm sorry, A, C, and K.
I move that we enter a non-felice session under one ninety-three. A, C, and, there's a dash there.
It's ninety-one dash A.
Ninety-one dash A.
Colon three, two.
Three, two.
A, C.
A, C, and A.
Go hollow?
Then, who's second?
Second.
Go hollow?
Yes.
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 And if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask John to stay for the first one, and.
Okay.